Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Monday, August 28th, 2017. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocet.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Mr. Vargas from the Valley View Church of the Nazarene.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for your invitation to come before the throne of grace to find mercy and grace to help us in our time of need. And Father, we confess this evening that we're in need. We're in need of your guidance, we're in need of your leading. And I pray, Heavenly Father, for the leaders of Series. I ask, Lord God, that you would continue to bless our Mayor Chris Viera and our Vice Mayor, Lord God, Mike Klein, and all the board members, Heavenly Father, and all the leaders of the City of Series. We ask, oh, Lord God, that you would fill them with the knowledge of your will through all spiritual wisdom and understanding. And I pray this, so that they may live a life worthy of you and pleasing in your sight, bearing fruit in every good work. Heavenly Father, may they continue to bring fruit out of all the work that you give them. May they continue to grow in your knowledge and be strengthened, Heavenly Father, by your power, so that they may have great endurance and patience in every task that comes their way. May you bless them and may everything that they do, Heavenly Father, bring you honor and bring you glory. Thank you for them, Lord God. Continue to bless them, bless their loved ones. And, Father, keep them strong, keep them healthy spiritually, mentally, physically, so that they may enjoy long life in you and bring you much fruit and much honor. We thank you and we love you, and we ask this all in the precious and wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have a presentation, the Stanislaus County Library Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Viera, council members, and members of the public. I'm Diane McDonald, your county library director, and with me is Anne Marie Montgomery, Series Library Supervisor. Yay! I'm here today to share some news about the Stanislaus County Library and to request your endorsement for the renewal of the library sales tax, Measure S, which is on the consent calendar for your consideration. As you know, we have an outstanding library system here in Stanislaus County, and the library is the most used and visited public resource in our county. Last year, 2.3 million people walked through library doors and 1.8 million items were checked out. Our secret of success is really that we listen to our customers. We get regular feedback through surveys and through conversations with our customers. And we recently completed a new five-year strategic plan, which is based largely on community input and available on our website for review. In response to customer requests, we've been expanding our services and resources. For example, in addition to our popular ebook collection, we've added a variety of new electronic resources, including downloadable audiobooks, magazines, movies, and music. We also offer an online language learning resource, where you can learn virtually any language on earth from the comfort of home. All of these e-resources and apps are available 24/7 from a home computer or mobile device. Today, none of us can survive without the internet, and the library fills this need for many Stanislaus County residents. For those who have their own devices, the library offers free wifi, and we also provide public computers at all of our 13 libraries. Other unique services include passport application services at Modesto and Salida Libraries, a new self-service library facility for youth at the Juvenile Justice Center, a veterans' resource at the Modesto Library, and as an addition to our vast book collection, we're now connected to the LinkPlus interlibrary loan service. With LinkPlus, you can search the catalogs of almost 100 libraries throughout California and Nevada, and the requested materials will arrive at your local library at no charge. Early literacy is an important focus for the library and one of our most important services. Our expanded children's resources include storytime and fun programs for babies and preschoolers to help them prepare for kindergarten. Last year, 1,100 storytimes were offered at our libraries, and nearly 400 elementary school children visited the library. We also have a vast collection of carefully selected books for this age group. Plus, we offer electronic resources that provide fun and educational computer activities for children. But knowing that not all families can get to a library, we now have a dedicated team of four outreach staff who bring these services to families out in the community. Programs and services are delivered to a variety of locations outside the library, including a pop-up library at the WIC office on Hackett Road. While families are waiting for WIC services, library staff share stories with children, check out books, issue new library cards, and help educate parents about the importance of reading to their children. So this is just a snapshot of some of the important and innovative work taking place at the library, but our library is at risk. We won't be able to provide any level of service without sales tax revenue. In fact, our libraries could close. The one-eighth-of-a-penny sales tax that funds the library is expiring, and this library provides 89% of library funding. Voters will be asked to renew it with a yes vote on Measure S in November 2017. Since 1995, when it was first approved by over two-thirds of Stanislaus County voters, this tiny sales tax has kept our libraries open. We'll be seeking a renewal for a period of 12 years. And this is not a new tax. It simply renews the existing tax that we already pay. It's a dedicated tax. All funds go directly to the library and by law cannot be used for any other purpose. And the library is a bargain. The average resident contributes a little over $18 per year for taxable purchases. So we truly have a world-class library system here in Stanislaus County, and it's definitely worth preserving and protecting. So Measure S requires a two-thirds vote to pass, so it's important that everybody get out to vote yes. Can I answer any questions?
Is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have another presentation that is not listed on your agenda, and this is a special presentation that the city and the council wanted to present Mr. Shepherd, Len Shepherd, with a plaque. For those of you who may not be aware, Mr. Shepherd has been attending meetings and sitting on committees for us for a few decades, and he's just informed us recently that he is going to be undergoing some medical procedure on his knees and some other things. And so he is going to start to, I'm going to use the word, limit his time here at councils, even though he said that he will be backing out from attendance. But we sure will miss him, and as part of that, we wanted to present him with a plaque. I know he has a speaker card here, and he wants to make some comments, but he didn't know this was going to occur, so when we get done with this plaque, I'll let him come up and speak. But I have a plaque here that says, "With heartfelt appreciation to Leonard Shepherd for dedicated public service on the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, September 2013 through August 2017, presented this 28th day of August 2017, City of Series, California, Series, City of, excuse me, Series City Council, Together We Achieve." And so with that, I would like to come down, give this to Mr. Shepherd, and let him say a few words if he'd like.
After all these years, I did fill out a speaker's card, but the city has been my, I don't know how to say this, it's been what I, my goal in life was to help where I live. I live in Series. I've been here since June 26, 1993. I started, because I retired in 1996, in 1997, I started coming to city council meetings. And let me tell you, some of the ones that we've had in the past have been really poor. I like what I see up here now. There's people sitting up there who care, and I think you care as much as I do about the city. I started in applying for membership to the Tooluma River Regional Park Committee. I served 13 years, six years, and then I had to take a break when my father was ill, and I served seven more. And then I started on the Measure H Committee, which Measure H was really important to me because it has done a lot for our fire and police. I was going to have item number 10 pulled off of the agenda, just so that I could make my statement about the library and the tax. So I'm not going to do that now. I'm going to do it right now. If you don't support the library tax, you're an idiot, because libraries are more important than anything that I can think of that you pay taxes for, other than fire and police. If you've never been to a library, there's something wrong with you. I started my library card, my first card was in Fresno County when I was a kid. And then, when I moved to Calaveras County, 20-some years of Calaveras County Library. Then I moved to San Mateo County, two-and-a-half years, San Mateo County Library Card. I moved here to Stanislaus County, and I think it was probably 20 days or so, and then I went and got my library card. I am a firm believer that education is important, and one of the most important things about education is reading. And these folks provide the most. Libraries provide adventure. You can sit in your home and travel around the world. You can go out into outer space. You can just do it all. I will say one more thing, and then I'll sit down and shut up. I may be back. I don't know. It all depends on what happens, but I am tired. I described the calluses on my forehead from beating my head against the wall of apathy for the people who won't come, and there are some fine folks that are coming now. Sheila and Lee Grant, they're getting involved. That's great. The old cowboy back here, he's a good man. He is a good man, because he cares about Series. The people who live here and don't care are the ones that, they just make me kind of feel sad, because they're not here. They're not seeing what their government can do to them or for them. So I will, I'll tell you, before I start crying, this means a lot to me. Thank you very much.
Now, we will move to citizens' communication to council on matters not included on the While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. So at this time, I have one speaker card. It's Crystal McCoy.
I'm going to try to be as professional and to the point as I can. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'd like to thank you for your time. I've come to the city looking for help, looking for resources that would aid us in the fight against our landlord. We are a family of seven. We have two great-grandparents, a grandmother, a mother, a father, a 14-year-old, and a three-year-old daughter. We've been together all of my life and all of my children's lives. That is the family we choose to be. When we moved into our current address, the landlord portrayed himself a man who understood our dynamic and was happy to rent to clean decent people. Over the last seven years, he has consistently proven that he is a fraud. We have lived with below-standard levels of human decency, and after years of keeping quiet, out of fear of being evicted, we decided to stand up to him. Our living conditions were getting worse by the day. We've had a small methane leak coming from our washing machine plumbing. The landlord knew this just a few months after we moved in, and we still deal with it today. Excuse me. We've fought the electricity in our home for seven years. After five years of trying to find out and find replacements for fuses, which is not easy, seeing as how I believe they went out in the early 90s, maybe even before that, we finally got an electric box. But without updating the wires in our home, which are still copper and cloth-wrapped, the new box did absolutely nothing to help, seeing as how our house was built in 1949. These things were livable compared to the problem that found us just last year, when our garage, which was added on without permits or inspections, and therefore our home became the home of rats and cockroaches. When we called our landlord about the initial problem, he decided to become unavailable. We did what we could on our own. We set traps. We bombed for bugs. We put everything in containers. We've lost furniture, irreplaceable memories to rats. We've done everything within our power to make it safe and possible for our children and our elderly to stay in the home, to no avail. When a rat chased my three-year-old daughter out of our kitchen, we decided it was time to stand up. We started with our landlord. When he proved to be no help, actually yelling at me in my dining room that it wasn't his problem and we could leave if we didn't like it, I then got on the phone. For two weeks, I tried to get ahold of a code enforcement officer, a building inspector, any type of local government agency that could help us, at least set me in the right direction to get help. I have called the city manager's office, the city planner's office, finally going into city hall myself, and being told by a woman who said she was HR that the city will not get involved in our situation or help us. Excuse me. I've lost my place. Okay, I'm sorry. With a last-ditch effort, we called the fire department directly. With no smoke detectors or CO2 detectors, we figured they would be the ones saving us if, God forbid, a fire happened. And with that phone call, we were blessed with Patty Malloy. Patty Malloy sent us to what was then a new code enforcement officer, Mr. Kenneth Taylor, another saving grace. Upon arriving to her house, Mr. Taylor could not walk through our front door without noting several violations initially, and after a mild walk-through of the house, discovered 19 visual violations without the help of a building inspector. Mr. Taylor looked into the history of the house. He found that several additions were made to the house without permits or inspection approval. Our landlord has been renting for years in Series without a license to rent, and the property is not listed as a rental anywhere within Series, and we can still not get help from the city, we're told. Now, we were left to figure out where to go. Although this is just a quarter of our whole story, because I only have five minutes, it actually got worse, when we found out last Monday that Mr. Taylor was let go as code enforcement officer. Now, we were left with a half-open code enforcement case, a landlord who is currently evicting us and harassing us about what we started. And we looked to the only person in the city who was willing to help. When we came face-to-face with Patty Malloy, we realized we weren't the only ones looking to the city for help. I'm very sorry, but I need to finish. After finding out, after finding out we currently have no code enforcement officer, no fire marshal, and no fire chief to speak of at our disposal, we knew we had hit a wall. This is why I stand before you. Where, as a tax-paying citizen of Series, do we go for help? We're a family fighting to stay together in a city we have been a part of for 50-plus years. To find out there was no help was devastating. To know that our landlord has not and will not be held accountable for the terrible living conditions forced upon us is a very sad blow to small-town living. Why is there no proactive substandard housing programs? Where is the help? It is your job, your job as the city manager, as a city planner, as a city council. It's your job to make sure people of your town are safe and not taken advantage of. There's no accountability. Every person I talk to passed the buck, every single person, leaving us with no other option than to take our fight public and stand up with humility and pure embarrassment and tell you, "I'm sorry."
Okay. If you don't mind, I think we have the general, just, I want to ask Mr. Wells, if the city, this is news to me, if the city doesn't handle it, who would they turn to?
Well, we do have code enforcement. Sergeant Coley is responsible for code enforcement. Kenny Taylor got another job, so he was a temporary employee, so he got another job. Sergeant Coley is responsible for that. This is the first I've heard of this issue. I don't have any messages from him. So Sergeant Coley, if you'd like, you can give your information to Captain Collins here, and we'll ensure that we follow up on this issue. There are some other resources. Obviously, from a code enforcement standpoint, we're limited on what we can do, but obviously with the violations that they've referenced, there's some other things that we can do to ensure that they get the assistance that they need.
And that's what I would say as well. I mean, if there are code violations, we'll obviously take care of those, but again, the code enforcement officer that you talked about, we didn't relieve him. He'd got another job, and I believe in San Mateo.
Mr. Taylor gave the city a three-week notice on Friday of the week before last. He was told on Monday.
Don't argue with me. I'm trying to help you out here, okay? We will help you with the code enforcement, but I don't want to argue about whether someone left or got another job or whatever. That's not the issue here. At least, that's what I'm hearing. So if you'd like our help, we will have one of our officers get in touch with you and help you with the situation. I'm assuming that's what you would like.
Yes.
Okay. So if you could give Mr. Collins the contact information, then they can follow up and see what we can do to help you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Shane Parsons, Central Avenue, Series. Anyway, I wanted to tell the lady from the library that I've taken six of us to a fundraiser to raise money for your cause Wednesday night. So anyway, I wanted to appeal to the council a little bit pertaining to the TOT tax. It's kind of really near and dear to my heart. I was instrumental in helping getting that passed, you know, whatever I could do, knock on doors and hand out flyers. Really like to appeal to the council to see if we could get a committee put together. I mean, I just hate to see that money that's coming from people coming to this town, of which I bring probably as many people to Series as anybody throughout the year when I hold my events. I think that just letting it get buried in the general fund, I mean, I know we need money, but I'm hoping things are getting better. I feel great about what's happening downtown. I've been instrumental in making my buildings downtown look better, so just a thought to see if we could get something like that going, I think it'd be great.
So remind me, I think when we had this discussion before, you weren't here?
I wasn't here.
Okay.
We've already had it. You've already, no, he followed up, and it's on the list. It's a discussion item. I've got it currently scheduled October, November for a discussion item on the committee.
Right. When it first came up before the council, I wasn't here. When I returned to the council, I brought it up and asked if we can have a discussion on it, and I believe Mr. Wells was a target, was right around September or in that general area, because it was brought up back in February.
Yep. Yeah, we have it on the list.
So it's on the upcoming, in September or October?
We're kind of updating some things with the general plan, so it's looking more like October, like current schedule of items, depending on other direction that you may give this evening.
Okay. Does that work? Okay. All right. At this time, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forth, state your name. Okay. With that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 10 consent calendar items? Okay. Hearing none, we will move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? All right. Anyone in the audience? All right. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the consent calendar items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocet.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we will move to unfinished business. We have none this evening. Public hearing, we have none. New business done. We have one discussion item, the cannabis update and discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, this evening, we're updating where we left off the cannabis conversation from our last activity, so do a little bit of, I hate to use the word rehashing, but I will. This topic is just so ripe with different items that you can play fun with words, so I just can't resist at different times, so my apologies to start with. All right. So you've seen this slide before. What we have updated in this information is kind of the overview of the history of cannabis and the rules that have changed a little bit, most notably this year, June of 2017, the acronym changed again and got a little bit longer with the Medicinal and Adult Use of Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, so referred to as MACURSA now. And then in 2018, the licensing guidelines are to be issued by the state, so I'll get into those details here in a minute. And again, those are the two at the bottom, they're the legislation that changed those acronyms. They just keep getting longer and longer, so. So last time, we kind of discussed this topic as a discussion item. These were the two primary topics of conversation, was the reasonable regulations for the indoor cultivation, a direction really clearly to prohibit outdoor cultivation and personal use here in Series, and then some limited commercial operations on the commercial side of things, most notably the development agreement that was approved by this council in May of 2017 for case manufacturing. And then subsequent, or during that process of the approval of the DEA, there was some public comment regarding testing operations and whether we would allow those within our city. So that's kind of where we're at on the overall conversation. Just an update on the first overall policy direction, on the reasonable regulations. We are in draft right now. We've taken the council direction from last time of combining both the Indian Wells and the City of Waterford and looking at what some other cities have done. The City of Newman has taken a pretty proactive step in terms of merging those two documents together, so we're looking at that as a potential framework, as well as some other cities, what they've done. We hope to bring that back to planning commission and city council in October for approval of the indoor regulations. Again, subject to what you may do on the bigger picture, on whether it makes sense for that to be combined as one of more comprehensive ordinance, but that's the plan if the recreational and personal use is to stay on a separate track, we'd be bringing it in October. And so I wanted to give a little bit of overview of what's changed with the regulation. So in essence, the legislatures at the state level have recognized there's some inconsistencies between the two laws that were governing the last time we had this conversation. So AUMA, the Adult Use of Medical Marijuana Act, Prop 64, and then the between the two laws that were governing the last time we had this conversation. So AUMA, the Adult Use of Medical Marijuana Act, Prop 64, and then the medical side. Those two had some overlaps and some inconsistencies, so the legislature, we'll use the word fixed, tried to reconcile those differences and put into one framework what the laws should, how they should work with what is now referred to, rather than recreational, is referred to as adult use or medicinal. So those are kind of the two categories now for cannabis, goes under that new regulatory framework. So now, one single entity at the state level, and the licenses are all the same now, and they'll just have basically an A in front for adult use or an M, so delineates the same overall licensing structure. So a few other things that they changed. So we had talked about when we had the conversation with case manufacturing of the reference to vertical integration, meaning how many license could somebody hold at the same time there was concern, and the two different laws had different provisions. So those have been clarified now and cleaned up, per se, so that now you can have the same entity have multiple licenses, and there's still some consideration there. Also allowed for the co-location of medicinal and adult use, so you could have one facility that have both licenses and be able to sell product under both licenses. Previously, we had the transportation as a license, and in the case manufacturing DEA, that is one optional item that could be considered. That has now been eliminated under the new state law. Given local agencies a little more discretion on the approval of some of our regulations and their requirement for SEQA, so that's a help for the local governments. Like I said, universal packaging for requirements for edibles, so across the board, the state is coming up with some standards there and what the packaging should be, and you know, the focus here from lessons learned in other jurisdictions like Colorado of ensuring that the packaging is not enticing to the young people, so trying to be consistent so that there's not mistaken consumption of those edibles. And what this law did is it changed kind of the cannabis bureau's focus. They had released some draft regulations earlier this year on the medicinal side of things, and it was going through the review process. However, this SB 94 changed the rules, and so what's happened now, they've basically retracted that rulemaking process and have started a new process. We'll, they'll use what's referred to as their emergency rulemaking, where they're able to put the rules in place a lot quicker, and they will be doing that for both the adult use and the medicinal later this year, which is really within the next month, I think they're believing, they're hoping to release those draft regulations. Again, simple little things about license numbers being shown on any advertising that they do, and the big one for us is that the local control is preserved and actually clean things up a little bit of recognizing we, as a local government, have the ultimate control, that if we say no, the state won't issue a license in either case. And there was some, again, some differences between those two laws, which is very helpful for us, and now that we ensure that we can make the decision at the local level of what's best for our communities. So that was a real key change. And again, if you have any questions as I'm going through this, please stop me and ask any questions. So again, the licenses are now the same, they just have a different, you know, letter in front of them. Overall, twenty different licenses, the six categories, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, dispensary, distribution, which includes, they basically rolled transportation into the distribution piece, and then the microbusiness, which is that ability to have multiple licenses, where you'd have a combination of a dispensary cultivation and manufacturing. So those are the overall categories, and this is kind of the breakdown, cultivation being the biggest, you know, you've got the most options here with cultivation. You can kind of see it broken down primarily by location, whether it's indoors or outdoors. There's some difference on the type of lighting that's used, kind of indirect and those type of source of the lightings, you kind of think of the greenhouse or other specialty lighting that some of these folks use. And then you've got nursery up to the larger facilities, kind of down there in the type five. So those, you know, there's a range, there'll be a license issued for each one of those, and you know, every, you know, business owner will, you know, likely find the niche that works best for them, and that's kind of what this law was built around, is giving that flexibility to have those different license types.
Now, does any of this address the issue with ventilation, the smell, you know?
What do you mean? These would be the license that the state would issue. It would be up to the local jurisdiction to determine what conditions and requirements would be put in place, but generally speaking, the state law does have some overarching requirements for those type of issues, but it would also be at the local level to ensure that, from our local governance standpoint, that it's not affecting neighbors. That's kind of the general theme that most people are doing.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, everybody here, you know, can attest, every once in a while, we get the stench from the dump, you know, jiltin', coming over this way, you know, and, you know, now when you have this cultivation and they start doing the processing, then at the ventilation, and then all of a sudden, you got that out there.
Well, this council has been consistent that no outdoor cultivation was going to happen in our city, so then that's where most of the, you know, the smell related to the harvesting is related to the outdoor. Most indoor facilities will attest to one of the bigger expenses of the cultivation indoors as well as manufacturing is the air conditioning system and the turnover of air that's necessary to keep those odors from escaping the building. So that's a big, big component of the overall construction process.
But remember where we were, and they were complaining to next-door neighbors about they could smell it really heavily in their bathroom. So what happens in the case if they're not in a standalone building and the people right next door claim that they can smell it?
Are you talking about in a commercial situation or residential?
Commercial.
So in a commercial situation, again, that would be up to the regulations that if this council were to move in that direction to allow it, those are regulations that we could create to ensure that that doesn't happen. Right? Anything else on that cultivation side? Then an update on case manufacturing. We've issued the building permit for their cultivation component of their facility, and they've submitted for the, basically the manufacturing area, which is their lab component, where they would do the actual extraction process. So that permit was submitted to the city for review, and the current expectation is it'd be operational October-ish. There's obviously still some consideration for when that might happen. So that's the overall overview where case manufacturing is under the terms of the development agreement. So that kind of takes us to kind of the reason why we're here this evening. There's been lots of conversations within the community. This overall topic is moving relatively quickly in terms of the way our state government works, in moving forward with putting the framework and the conversation together. So this evening, looking for council direction on which, if any way, we should go in our next conversation related to commercial cannabis. And so as this council had talked about before, about testing operations and whether those should be allowed, and if so, where, and then the rest of those categories. From a staff perspective, we've gone down the kind of individual route. We would look for council direction to whether you would like to see us do a more comprehensive approach, where we look at those other avenues that come up with an ordinance that is a little more comprehensive, or give us direction that you would like to see something more specific in those categories. This evening is really kind of that check-in with where we've been, where we're going, and look for council direction as how you'd like us to proceed as we move forward.
Okay. So you're looking for comments?
Yep.
All right. Any comments from the council on this?
Are we taking, this is the end of your presentation?
This is the end of my presentation, so if you want to open it up for the public, for comments for the public before you give us direction.
Okay. Sure. All right. At this time, I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on the material that Mr. Wells has presented or the subject matter.
Paula Redfern. Just real quick, when you brought up the smell and for the commercial, where they can smell it in an adjoining suite or something like that, I'd also hope you'd consider that for, you know, duplexes, apartments, that type of thing. Take that into consideration as well, because there's a lot of apartments in this city that are growing marijuana already, and it's going to increase once the laws or everything goes into effect.
Council had already directed that it would be for, the permit process were single-family only. You had already indicated not being allowed for multifamily.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and direction. On some of our, Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, you know, after touring the facility and then coming back a couple of weeks later, and I'd shared this with the city manager, there was a show on TV called The Prophet with Marcus Lamona. And they had the, he did an hour show about how it saved the finances for the city of Palm Desert and what they allow, and their cultivation is in a single, their cultivation is in a standalone, single type of industrial area. But they also allow the retail in, lack of better words, shopping centers, similar to whether it's a Save Mart or Richland or whatever, and it was a very eye-opening experience for Marcus Lamona and me. I mean, I even had my wife watching that thing, because it's a totally different concept or thing that I think I thought of before. So with that being said, I think that, you know, we need to pull the resources together and do a fairly decent, comprehensive, what kind of ordinance we want, it's going to be acceptable, because it's here, it's not going away, and how we want to do things. I know that when we toured the facility, the tenants, and I'll say it, next door, they had no complaints, they had no complaints whatsoever about the business, other than when the business is shut down for a day or so or even overnight, and they turn on the ventilation system, then all of a sudden, they smell it in their warehouse and in their bathroom, and that's the only complaint they had. Because they've done, they've done an excellent job of keeping the clients away from parking and staying in front of their building and walking front, they've done an excellent job as far as controlling the traffic. The only complaint they had is that when the ventilation system did get kicked on, even though they're separate units, that it does bleed into their warehouse and their bathroom, their facility. It's not in their office, it's not into their office and their work area. So I think that, you know, it's here to stay, we need to do something about it, and, you know, I'm going to keep a very open mind, but like I say, I think we need to, we need to get, you know, somewhat extensive on this and not just do it just because it's here.
I do agree with you, Councilmember Klein, in regards to it's not going away. You know, and there's some states that I don't think have done a good job, look at Colorado, and I think if you look up north, I think they're doing a fairly decent job. You know, one of my biggest concerns is that if we take baby steps to get to where we want to go, then somebody may jump on the horse faster, and then all of a sudden, you know, it does us no good here in Series, because we already have the leakage, right? We don't have the restaurants, we don't have the goods, the stores. We'll hopefully get that at some point in time. But I think this is an opportunity, knowing that it's here, that it's going to help our general fund if we do decide to go that route. So I'm all open in regards to this process, but I really think we need to, and you already have, I mean, we've already taken the steps, taken the steps to be able to get there, but I just think we need to look hard and fast.
Right. And, you know, I agree, and, you know, touring the facilities and that sort of thing, I, you know, found an open mind that basically it's a good thing, probably. It's not a bad thing. You know, I was kind of, I don't know, I guess a little older than some of these guys up here and younger than others, but, 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 under the impression, like, you know, I don't know that I want to have this in our community, right? But here's the deal, I think if we don't get on board, it's going to be all around us anyway. And here's the other thing that the state has given us finally, local control. So there's going to be no license issued unless we say this particular individual is asking for permits of whatever sort it may be, which, by the way, I think we should give our staff full support and let them go out and not tie their hands and just look at every one of these categories and bring something back to us. I really believe that should happen, but, but more importantly, the reason why I think I feel a lot safer in saying that is because what the state has finally said. You guys have control, you're not going to issue, we're not going to issue a license unless you say so. So that means we'll be able to control how many we want to have in town. We don't really like this person, they don't really, you know, meet our standards, so you know what, we're not going to approve, they can go to another community if that's what they choose to do. But, so I think that's a really big deal for us in the future, so. I would support moving forward with all these different categories and a comprehensive study and bringing them back to us, because I think if we don't, we're going to, we're going to miss out some things. Somebody else is going to do it, and, you know, why not be us?
Well, I would agree with what everyone said with the caveat that we need to look really closely at what restrictions we're going to place and where they're going to be put, because if you will remember at the tour, one of the other complaints from the neighbors was all of the traffic, because it really wasn't intended to be, it was more like it was a retail, well, it was a retail business, but there was just so, it was just coming and going and coming and going, and you can't, you have to be really careful when you locate a business like that, that it doesn't create issues for the surrounding businesses, so I'm open as well.
All right. A few comments I have. About a week and a half ago, I was vacationing in South Carolina, and I took, I was actually in Savannah, and I took the tour bus, I guess, and the last stop was the Alcohol Museum, and you walked in and there was all pictures from the twenties, and you know, you see the sign, alcohol is poison and evil, and you saw the Bible and everything, it was just amazing. And at that point, I thought, whether I believe in cannabis or not, this is a hundred years fast forward to the same things that they were kind of dealing with at that point. So when I saw that, I thought to myself, I need to keep an open mind to this, because obviously, as we've said before, when the voters of California decided to take the direction they did, that was the message that was sent. So for me personally, it's, okay, now, that decision was made, how do we take the decision that they had given us and the direction, and we lay out what's the best for our city? I did not tour with any of the other council members here, but I did have the ability to go through a dispensary, and I will admit, I was quite shocked at what I saw. The industry seems to be much, much more mature, much more advanced, and a cleaner operation than I thought. Again, maybe that's because I wasn't educated on it, but that tour of the facility really opened up my mind to what was going on. I think I agree with Vice Mayor Klein and Councilmember DeRocet. It's here to stay. It's not going away. If it's not here in Series, it'll be in Bresto, Turlock, well, maybe not Turlock, I don't know. But I can tell you, the amount of activity and everything that's going on, it's going to be prevalent throughout our region, throughout the state of California. I was in Southern California, in LA, and I saw the billboards for weed map and weed delivery, and I was in Oakland and I saw it. It's not going away. So with that, I have to look at this and say that, okay, for, I agree with you, we need to do what's in the best interest for our city, and I think we need to, you know, embrace it, work with it. Again, whether my beliefs are there or not, that's not why I'm here. I have to do what the general public, the majority, would like. And so my feeling is, is that I think that we should explore the other license categories. I would agree with Councilmember DeRocet that I think we need to move as expeditious as we can. I kind of use the analogy that, I fully believe that this market will have a bubble. It will go up and it will drop down, and it's kind of like musical chairs. When the music stops and everybody sits down, there's going to be organizations that are successful and organizations that are not. And I think it's imperative that we do our research, and like we did with case manufacturing, and we align ourselves with those that we believe will be successful. I'm hearing all sorts of people are looking at this and are investing heavily, from Philip Morris on one side to, you know, private enterprise on the other. So I, again, I would urge staff that we look at this as expeditiously as we can so that urge staff that we look at this as expeditiously as we can, so that we can make that determination of who we want to do business with, and then, you know, at the end of the day, as long as we have a good, solid arrangement, then if it goes south, I still think we'll be okay, so. That's my comment, I don't know, so I think what I'm hearing here, the direction is, and correct me if I misstate for anybody or if anybody says no, I think I'm hearing we would like you to investigate the other licenses that we haven't done anything, and that we would like you to come back with the comprehensive approach as to that.
Yep, real clear.
Okay?
Got it.
Is that?
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, with that, that gives you the direction you need, at this time, we will move to council member referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, reports, I have nothing to report, Councilmember Rhino?
Well, I don't have a report, but I have a question.
Sure.
To the city manager, do we still have a functioning VIPS program?
Yes.
Do our VIPS currently go out and pick up shopping carts, pull down yard sale signs, report graffiti, do they do that?
They can do that, that's generally not their highest priority with the other items they're generally working with, and we don't have them, they're pretty limited hours-wise.
Because I know that there, I know we have an issue with, we don't have, with code enforcement, but I've seen where this other city is really taking advantage of their volunteers and police, and I'm just thinking how great that would be if we could use them to pick up, right now, we have two shopping carts on Caswell, I'm not sure what happened with that, but shopping carts that are out and about, there's still a lot of yard sale signs that don't get taken down, it just seems to me that it would be great if we could use them to do that.
Okay, so is that something?
We'll follow up and see what their.
Okay.
Timing, and I'll get back to council.
Okay. Anything else, no? Vice Mayor Klein?
I really don't have a referral, but I got a follow-up, you know, there's, the last couple of days, there's been a lot of emails going through from Mr. Warren, I'd just like to ask, have those been forwarded to Sergeant Cooley? And I know that we do have a new code enforcement officer that's going to be coming on board shortly, so I'm just, I'm just trying to see if they've been forwarded on to.
Yes, those were forwarded on to Sergeant Cooley this morning, as well as Patty Malloy, as mentioned earlier, who is triaging those in terms of the priority, and some of those can be handled by Ava, our abandoned vehicle, so a couple of those can be handled that direction, so those have been parsed out and prioritized in terms of which one's the highest priority, and those are what we're working on.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lane?
Just a question, it's came to my attention again, my phone call regarding the Fifth Street buses and crossing and that sort of thing, what were we planning to do, if anything, over there?
As we told the council then, we are planning to incorporate that into our citywide ATP, alternate transportation program, and we got a grant from the state to do that, that will look at all of our pedestrian access, bicycle access, and that would be studied as part of that program.
Okay.
We don't have a timeframe yet, but it's one of the things that the engineering department's working on.
Thank you.
Okay, Olga, anything this evening? No, Tom?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Just two things, one, Labor Day is next Monday, so City Hall will be closed for that day, observance of that holiday, and then, most of you have seen on Facebook, there's been a group that has been formed that has a meeting tomorrow evening regarding the water tower, so staff will be attending that meeting with some of the community to discuss options for preserving or saving the water towers, just want to let council know that, that we will be attending that, and that's it for this evening.
Okay, Tom? Darrell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick update on Forest Street, as you can see, we've got a lot more sidewalks going down, a lot more concrete being installed this week, we were able to slip in this last weekend and put in the sidewalk in front of series drug to minimize the impact on the business, and that went over real well, makes me real pleased with that, so.
Great, Mr. Collins?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Jeremy? I hear you hiding back there, no, I think Bettina is already gone, so Supervisor DiMartini?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, well, with that, we will adjourn to closed session where we have conference with labor negotiator, and then pending that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be, what date do we have here?
September 11th.
What's that?
September 11th.
September 11th, 2017, thank you.